Oh, thank you. I just came from. It's all good.
We have all this winter all year round.
Yeah, we do too.
In the winter, it's winter.
In this world, it's winter.
I mean, we're in a warehouse.
We don't have to.
But it's just easier for me to be able to get to my customers.
I work for.
I work for Anywear.
Oh, okay.
In a.
You too have to.
I do, yes.
So which?
I'm not a fan. I had a long conversation with a firefighter who was just been taken out today.
I did too.
I had a short one and I had a long one today.
You'll be here when you're ready.
Um, you know, I already written out what I wanted to say today, but I will definitely be trying. Your girl.
Yeah, because I was also, because I was at work, so I just started changing over my bring back.
Because I have, I still take the bikes sometimes. And I will, and I'll, like, because of the weather. But that's better guess than.
It sure was wonderful today.
And it's more. Oh, I've, I've got a whole bag of. She's working so bad.
I have.
Oh, was it really? Shoot, I just lost my clock. It's a timer. Saves money on printing boxes, huh? They just get white boxes. All right, I think we're ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling to order the North Ridgeville City Council meeting. Today is Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Father, as we come together once again this evening, we thank you for the gifts of mutual respect and insights into the common concerns that we all share. We thank you for helping us to accomplish our work this day, and we ask these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Here.
Avens.
Here.
Winkle.
Here.
Awig.
Here.
DeVries.
Excused.
Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Law Director.
Here.
This engineer. Finance Director. Clerk or council?
Here.
Tonight, under the approval of minutes, we have the city council meeting minutes dated September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. We will move on to our lobby session. Many of you have heard my spiel before, but for those of you who haven't, the lobby session is due to the limited time that we have, not intended to be a question and answer period. However, it is an opportunity for the public to address city council as well as the city administration regarding any of the business of city council or the general affairs of the city. We do ask those that wish to speak tonight to please speak at the podium and to begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time, three minutes, you will be given up to three minutes to speak. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. We do have a few written submissions this evening, so I'll take those in the order in which they were received. And up first is J.D. Gonkowski. Again, J.D., if you could state your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Okay, my name's J.D. Gonkowski. I'm at three four eight two three Cambridge. Over the last few weeks, both online, insert I roll, and here in meetings, there's been questions about the city charter. We are a charter. We are a home rule city. We are not governed by the Ohio Revised Code. Last year, I was on the Charter Review Committee, gave me a chance to study it, and I just want to let the public know what entails that. So our charter is, the charter is allowed in the Ohio Constitution, that's section or part eighteen, section seven. Any municipality may frame a charter for government. That means we have control, not the state legislature. It's controlled here in North Ridgeville. Cities without charters are called general law. Those are governed by the Ohio Revised Code and don't have local control. Our charter was established in nineteen sixty-two, went to effect shortly after we were incorporated and we stopped being Ridgeville Township. What does all that mean? Charter is our municipal constitution. It is approved by the voters. The charter limits and defines the duties, powers, and responsibilities of local government. Essentially, the charter describes and defines local government based on our preferences and controls versus laws passed by the state legislature. Recently, there were some comments and questions about the elimination of the Safety Service Director. Section seven-one of the charter states, "Council may provide, subject to the charter, ordinance, organizations, Department of Law, Finance, Department of Public Safety, Department of Public Service, and Properties, and may establish new departments and divisions, and may eliminate divisions with exceptional law in finance." This was approved by voters in nineteen ninety. So this was, the elimination of the SSD was a few months ago. That fully meets seven point one of the charter. Not saying I agree, disagree. It is what it is. There's also some grumblings about the auditor and treasurer being combined into the finance director. Prior to joining to the committee, I had that question, why do we have a treasurer? Why do we have an auditor? It was also brought up by the administration in those meetings. I knew the auditor was hired by you guys and approved by you guys, treasurer by the mayor, with council approval. And I just, we asked members of council what they thought about not hiring the finance director. One member, God bless his soul, Mr. Boos, who's the most respected member, sorry, guys. He said it was best to be done by the administration, the hiring done by the administration. And remember, every hiring must be approved by a majority of council. So they do have say. Lastly, the charter does not make job descriptions, except for the mayor. That is the job executive, the mayor. That's pretty much the same as any other organization in the world. Just wanted to let people know about the charter. Thanks. Go Browns.
Thank you, Mr. Gonkowski. Up next, Susan Olson. And Mrs. Olson, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Olson. I live at seventy-six eighty-five Manock Road. I just wanted to address the mayor and the council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for sharing your thoughts and your kind words at the last meeting of, on the loss of Dennis. I came to know Dennis through the Democratic Party and our North Ridgeville Dem Club, and he is dearly missed by all of us, and please excuse any emotion, because we really do miss him. As Councilwoman Swink mentioned two weeks ago, he was also our go-to guy. He was our mentor, our friend, and our coach. No question was too small or too silly for Dennis. He responded in kindness every single time. He led with empathy and a lot of love. And even when he had a stern message to deliver, which he did, he didn't make you feel as if you were being scolded. His gentle spirit brings to mind this quote from Maya Angelou. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Dennis made all of us feel as if we're part of the same community, all of us working for the common good. My request to you this evening is to keep Dennis's spirit in mind as you choose his replacement for the last three months of his term. Please choose someone who represents all of us, the whole community. I believe such a gesture on your part would truly honor his memory, and it would go a long way to breach a political divide that seems so vast these days. I don't know if this is a moot point. I don't know if the decision has been made, but that's our request from the Dems. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Mrs. Kersey.
My name is Shelley Kersey. I live at three seven eight eight six Stony Lake Drive in North Ridgeville, Ohio. As of today's date, we have lost one firefighter, Avon Lake. We currently have three police officers who have put their names on hiring lists for other cities. That's a concern. While we have silence from this administration, their actions speak volumes. And while there is nothing but silence from the mayor on the issue, he now wants to be the acting safety service director, or excuse me, the actor and director of public safety. That person surely should be very involved with what is happening to our safety services. Again, we will be met with silence. Speaking of silence, why don't we ask anyone here why our police radios did not work inside our city schools up until very recently? I think the public needs to hear someone speak to the fact that those radios did not work properly in our buildings. I stand here before you and ask for answers, knowing I will get none. I realize that you have chosen not to answer any questions from citizens in the interest of time. However, there seems to be other reasons as well. I've asked for communications regarding the cost of the investigation into the police department, and as of this date, my phone is silent. I also emailed our law director on August twenty-eighth regarding any and all communications coming into and out of City Hall regarding the Marx radio system and the Harris radio systems. Again, silence, as always. Your silence, the lack of communication and transparency of this administration speaks volumes. It is a message that says.
Mr. President, point of order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I know the law department sent emails to Mrs. Kersey, so there hasn't been silence. I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The silence was, you'll get it when I get it to you. It's a message that says you as a citizen do not matter, you don't deserve an answer, and we don't give a darn about you at all. So again, I'm sure there will be silence on any, on all issues as well, but that is all we ever hear, silence, dead silence, and it's frightening. We need better from all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kersey. Mrs. Zingali.
I use the bigger font this time, so hopefully it goes a little better. My name is Kali Zingali. I live at three five one one two Jason Drive. Five, five officers. That's how many we lost in the twelve months leading up to this review. Every single one of those officers cited the chief of police as a large part of the reason that they left. Four, it's four officers now that are talking to other agencies, and that's just that I know of. I'm not saying I talk to every officer at our department, but of the ones I speak with, four are on other lists. Two supervisors that are looking at taking early retirement if the chief remains at our department. And two supervisors that will be retiring early next year, or by early next year, one of those being our captain. What's the problem with that? None of our current supervisors are willing to take the captain's test if the chief remains in his position. With five officers already gone and eight looking at leaving, can we afford to keep him? As members of council, you all received the survey that my husband conducted within the department and the letter he wrote you. You are all aware of what is happening at the department and what that survey said, as is the public now. We were told, well, my husband was told, as was council, that the mayor would be handling this. How has that gone so far? There's been a lot of questions and not a lot of answers, and now people are holding you guys accountable. The talk isn't just about his failures, but is why you haven't shown more support and been more proactive. And I don't think all of you are bad people or not doing your job, but you could definitely do more. It is okay to publicly support our officers. His refusal to communicate is coloring people's opinions of you. The safety of our city is only being put in more danger as firefighters leave. I had a very nice opportunity to speak with our firefighter that just left for Avon Lake. He spoke to me quite a bit regarding his exit interview, which I, I believe was done by April, our finance director's assistant, because we don't have an H R department. What he had to say wasn't blowing about our mayor, and I won't repeat it here, but I will say this. Having spoken to him and multiple other members of our fire department, we're going to lose more of them too. Something needs to change. We need to support our safety services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zingali. I don't have any further written submissions this evening. Is there anybody in attendance who would like to address council or the administration? Mr. Craig? If you could please state your name and address.
Albert Craig, thirty-seven nine oh three Sugar Bridge Road. A little bit of a follow-up on what she just had to say. We're experiencing problems on our street, as you know, with the trucks. As of probably months, I'll say six months, and even recently, you won't find cops on Sugar Bridge Road during the afternoon, really never. In the Race Road area, yeah, there's trucks using Race Road. They're legally, but we got a bunch more just going down Sugar Bridge Road from one end to the other illegally. There's been nobody around to do anything about it for months, especially in the afternoons. I, myself, have observed officers sitting on Chestnut Ridge monitoring things. I've seen them on Center Ridge Road on the western end, monitoring things. It seems like Sugar Bridge Road is being avoided. We've been the squeaky wheel, and I guess it seems like the way to fix the problem is just ignore it, walk away from it, because they haven't been there doing anything. It's just been obvious. I've called the cops a number of times, letting them know when we're having a day with a whole lot of trucks coming down our road. A few of my neighbors have, and guess what? They never even show up at all. And the speeders, you wouldn't believe how bad that's gotten. Last week, I saw Crotch Rocket Motorcycle go down our road. He's probably pushing over a hundred miles an hour. It was a little scary. And average speed, just pulling on my driveway and following most cars down the road, fifty, sixty miles an hour, no problem, all the time. Last Saturday, and this is the disturbing part, I'm going, heading down, heading west on Sugar Bridge Road. There's two little girls and a boy, they're like this tall, playing in the front yard. Fifty feet away comes a semi-tank gasoline tanker truck blowing by. Is that disturbing or what? Nobody around to do anything about it.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there anybody else in attendance that would like to address council this evening?
My name is Beth Anne Galvez, homeowner of seven six six seven Avon Beldon Road. The development of Ridgeville Farms will impact my home greatly. My family's safety is my primary concern. I am raising three young daughters, and it is my job as a mother to keep them safe. I am concerned about the following impacts. Number one, increased traffic and hazards on Route eighty-three. What are your plans to mitigate the increased traffic and associated hazards? Traffic already backs up over the bridge during peak hours every day. This development will make it even more difficult to turn onto Route eighty-three from our road and the road across the street. Blind spots and grading will need to be greatly improved on both sides of Route eighty-three. Large vehicles such as semi-trucks going over forty-five miles an hour over that bridge can't stop in time for someone to pull out of our street. Number two, increased traffic on a private road. The planned pantry will be open to the public, which will be add to the numbers of road users. There is not enough space for this. The planned clubhouse will infringe upon the privacy of the private homeowners that are living next to it. I will be forced to put up a privacy fence at great expense to my family. The increased traffic in combination with the seizing of my property, detailed in the next point, will make it too dangerous for my children to play in the yard anymore. Number three, private property being taken away from homeowners and destroyed without compensation due to road widening. The plans include removal of my trees that provide privacy and shade for my family, who will be paying my electric bill. The plans also include shortening me and my neighbors' driveways and cutting into our yards. I own property on both sides of the road and pay property taxes on all of it. The developer does not own this road. The current residents all have easement rights to this road. Unless there is some kind of compensation or correction, it is my view that the current plans constitute theft. Impact number four, the address changing from Avon Beldon Road to Tebow Trail. We have lived there for over forty-five years. That is going to cause a lot of confusion for a lot of people. We are not part of this development. Also, has the fire department weighed in on whether or not they'll be able to provide services for their large truck vehicles? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Galvez. Is there anybody else that would like to address council this evening? All right, hearing none. Lobby session is now closed. We will move on to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight's agenda, under first readings, I'll be requesting the emergency on T ninety-five, an ordinance to amend six eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, traffic paint striping to increase the dollar amount from a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. The project went out to bid, and the lowest bid came in at a hundred and thirty-three, eight thirteen and twenty-five cents. Like to move to dispense with the second and third readings, add the emergency clause in order to award the contract and have the work completed before the nighttime temperatures become an issue for painting. Also, under first readings is T ninety-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Go-To-It Group for backup and disaster recovery services. I'll also be asking for the emergency clause for us to get that contract signed and utilize the services to back up our network. The service department is finished, is finishing up paving this week on Elyria, Francis, Helen, and Thelma, and we will be moving over to Lee Avenue at the end of the week to pave a top coat. This is always subject to change depending on weather, but the rest of the week looks pretty good. They've done a great job this year working through the list of twelve streets that they had scheduled at the beginning. The last in our series of summer concerts occurs at South Central Park on Sunday, September twenty-fourth, from six to eight P M. It is the Liverpool Lads. It is a Beatles tribute band. It was previously canceled due to weather conditions, so remember, the concerts are free. Pack a picnic lunch and bring your chairs or blanket and enjoy the concert. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting a more mayoral candidate forum on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, at six P M at the North Ridgeville Academic Center. Meet the two candidates running for mayor in the November election at that event. Candidate night for the ward council members and the school board is scheduled for Wednesday, October fourth, at six P M, also at the academic center and also hosted by the chamber. You can find information on the chamber's website for both of those events. On Friday, September twenty-ninth, from five to seven P M at the senior center, it is time for another edition of the senior center spaghetti dinner. Tickets are eight dollars for adults, seven dollars for seniors, and five dollars for children ten and under. It includes spaghetti and meatballs, a side salad, and bread. Pop and dessert are available for a dollar each. It is dine-in or take-out, and the proceeds benefit the senior center, and the Lions Club is sponsoring the event this time. Tomorrow, Chipotle in the Marx Plaza opens, and Culvers is soon to follow. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Race Road Bridge is tentatively expected to be open in two weeks. Because the full-depth pavement repairs came in significantly under the allotted budget, we will be looking to add approximately six hundred square yards of additional pavement repair work from the base bid quantity. The engineering department recently sent out a notice of violation letters to residents that appeared not to be in compliance with their backflow preventer requirements. We're learning, however, that they may receive this letter in error due to a loss of data when we migrated from the BPMS software to the MuniLink software, which we have chosen to move forward with. If you should happen to get any calls from these residents or their landscape contractor, and they feel they've received the letter in error, please have them call our office so we can remedy the situation, and we apologize for any inconvenience this may have caused. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This finance director.
I have nothing tonight, Council President.
All right, thank you. Please note that council has also received the August two thousand and twenty-three mayor's court report, the August two thousand and twenty-three fire department report, as well as the August two thousand and twenty-three water distribution and EPA report. There are no council committee reports on the agenda or correspondence or old business, so we'll move on to new business. The North Ridgeville Planning Commission took action on several items at their regular meeting of September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Clerk, if you could please read the first item.
Item number one, North Ridge Point subdivision end of Sophia Lane, permanent parcel number zero seven dash zero zero dash zero three zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero eight dash one seven nine and dash seven zero seven five. Proposal consists of amending the preliminary plan for the subdivision regarding the layout of residential lots and adding an additional twenty-acre piece of property. Properties owned R one resident district. Planning Commission granted preliminary approval in two thousand and eight and revised in two thousand and nine. Final plat approval of phase eight was granted earlier this year. The planning commission action approved by a vote of four to nothing with the condition to put a T turnaround at the end of Sophia Lane.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Avens.
This particular plan meets all the codes, both building and zoning, and so, and so I move to approve.
Second.
With the amended condition of a T turnaround at the end of Sophia Lane.
Thank you. It was moved by Avens and seconded by Awig to approve the planning commission's approval of North Ridge Point. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
No.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Clerk, please read the second item.
Item number two, Hampton Place subdivision, permanent parcel number zero seven dash zero zero dash zero two nine dash zero 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 dash zero two three, comma, dash five one five. Proposal consists of amending the preliminary plat regarding the layout of residential lots and adding an additional sixteen point nine acre piece of property originally reserved for future commercial use. Properties owned R one resident district. Planning Commission granted preliminary approval in two thousand and nine and amended in two thousand and thirteen. The planning commission action approved by a vote of four to nothing with the provision that extra attention be paid to drainage.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Avens.
This particular plan, again, meets all codes as far as zoning and building codes are concerned. What's also interesting about this is the developer has offered where possible that the residents along eighty-three will be. the residents along 83 will be allowed to connect into the sanitation system within the subdivision, as long as engineering does not have an issue with it. And also, residents did raise some concerns about drainage. The developer did stress that all water will be diverted to within the development itself. What I am doing is recommending, proposing approval, along with extra attention to be
The motion was made by Abins and seconded by AWIG to approve the Planning Commission's approval of Hampton Place. Is there any discussion at this time?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. AWIG.
Yeah, I was wondering if the law director might explain, we're approving the, what they proposed here, the fact that they're coming from, to North Ridgeville was approved a few years ago, probably, right? What are we approving on this?
Well, I think, and maybe the engineering would know, I think what happened is when they originally bought the property, they had submitted plans that got approved. After a certain amount of time, they have to resubmit to the Planning Commission a revised set of plans, and I believe that that's what was submitted.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Engineer.
They actually resubmitted the plan because the original plan showed some commercial development coming out onto 83, and the need for commercial just didn't seem warranted to them, so they've since revised it to be only commercial development, so there's a little bit of change in that area that was.
Mr. President, may I add to that?
You mean, they changed it to be residential, not commercial?
Yes, it's all residential, though.
Yes, Mr. Abins.
Yeah, presently and in the past, this particular area has been zoned R1. If they would have gone through with their commercial, they would have had to go for rezoning. They looked at it, and quite frankly, they didn't find any commercial developers interested in that particular area. Additionally, they looked at the homes that are on 83 as well, and it just wasn't going to work out for them for, as a commercial development. So they decided to keep it R1 and put some, put homes in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Abins.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sorry, if I may.
Ms. Engineer.
To Mr. Abins' point, I just wanted to clarify something regarding the residents along State Route 83. The developer has offered to potentially connect stormwater, have stormwater capabilities for connection for the residents on State Route 83. I just wanted to be clear, because they have household sewage systems along State Route 83, so there's no sanitary sewer abutting them along State Route 83. So as long as their systems are in compliance, their discharge may be connected to a storm sewer system, not a sanitary. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, my understanding was the fact that they may need to go into their sanitaries because their present systems are not eligible for the storms.
They'd have to upgrade their systems, yes, but the utility that would be provided would be storm sewer, not sanitary for those abutting residents. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Are there any additional comments at this time? So again, the motion was made by Abins. It was seconded by AWIG to approve the Planning Commission's approval of Hampton Place. With no further questions, clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
No.
Abins.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
AWIG.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Item number three.
Item number three, Ridgeville Farms Senior Housing, permanent parcel number 07-00-022-101-013, comma, 015, comma, 065, comma, 086. Proposal consists of final development plan approval and lock consolidation for a proposed senior citizen planned residential development. Property's owned R1 Resident District. BZBA approved variance request and conditional use restricted to 55 and older, and no more than 58 total units on August 26, 2021. And Planning Commission approved with condition of constructing a sound barrier. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of four to nothing.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
I'd like to make a motion to table PPZ 2023-0219 to the next city council meeting. I have some concerns as the Ward One representative. The clerk was not able to provide me with some stuff I asked for yet. She's working on it, and we currently don't have the meeting minutes available from that meeting.
Okay. So the motion was made by Swink and seconded by AWIG to table the third item, Ridgeville Farms Senior Housing, until our next meeting?
Correct.
Is there any discussion? Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Abins.
No.
Winkle.
Yes.
AWIG.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Item number three is table till the next meeting by a vote of four to one. All right, we also had a couple of new liquor permit requests that were received. Clerk, if you could please read the first permit request for Ohio Springs.
A request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new permit request from Ohio Springs Incorporated DBA Sheets 347 at 32390 Lorain Road, retroactive back to May 15th, 2023.
This particular request, we did review this back in May, I think, and it was determined that there was a typo on the part of the state, or on the state's part, rather, on the permit, so they had to submit another request, which is why the state said it was retroactive back to May 15th.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to not request a hearing so this permit can be sent to the state for final disposition by October 12th.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Swink to not request a hearing so this permit can be sent to the state for final disposition by October 12th. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Clerk, if you could please read the second liquor permit request from McMullin Entertainment.
A request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new permit request from McMullin Entertainment LLC at 37863 Center Ridge Road.
Mr. President, I'd like to also move to not request a hearing so this can be sent to the state for its final disposition by October 13th.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Swink to not request a hearing so the permit can be sent to the state for final disposition by October 13th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next on the agenda is recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by AWIG to dispense with recess this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Recess has been dispensed. We will move on to first readings. Up first is T-95.
T-95-2023, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6089-2023, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the 2023 traffic paint striping and other pertinences by increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $140,000.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for T-95. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, I move to add emergency clause to this ordinance so we get the paint on the ground before it gets too cold.
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by AWIG to add the emergency clause to T-95 for the reasons stated by Mr. Winkle. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Winkle and seconded by AWIG to adopt T-95 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Abins.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
AWIG.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously and becomes ordinance number 6101-2023.
T-95? I'm sorry, T-96?
T-96-2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to enter into an agreement with Go-To-It Group for backup and disaster recovery services at a monthly cost of $2,227.50.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to dispense with the second and third readings for T-96. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
I briefly talked to Tara Pete about this, and I did forget to ask her one question that maybe the mayor can answer. Was this the TBD that we removed from the original Go-To-It contract? Or was there a to-be-determined and we?
No, that was the email switching that we're going to still be doing.
Okay, so this is something separate from that?
Correct.
Okay. And I understand we get a $23,000 piece of equipment for free signing this 36-month contract?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to dispense with the second and third readings for T-96. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause, so that way we can enter into this contract and have these services provided to us immediately.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to add the emergency clause to T-96 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by AWIG to adopt T-96 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Abins.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
AWIG.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously and becomes ordinance number 6102-2023.
There are no second readings on tonight's agenda. Under third readings, we have T-84.
T-84-2023, an ordinance creating a new chapter, 867 Massage Establishments of the North Ridgeville Business Regulation and Taxation Code.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
I make a motion to adopt.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to add the emergency clause.
Second. I was just going to ask that.
Miss, without, oh, well, I'll wait for you to finish before I jump in.
Well, we need the reason for the emergency clause, so go ahead.
So, you know, we've talked about this from time to time as we've been going through this process. The reason for it is because we have had multiple requests for massage establishments coming to the city, and as a matter of fact, we just received one this morning, around 11 o'clock this morning, and I have an email that was shared at that time. So we'd like to have these rules go into effect before somebody makes an application for one of these places.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it was by understanding, too, that our current codes are limited in language, you know, with regard to massage establishments, so this ordinance would create a new chapter which would require them to be licensed and employ people who are licensed by the state, so.
It strengthens those rules and regulations.
Sure, sure. So I think it's fitting and appropriate to pass this immediately for the safety and welfare of the residents in North Ridgeville.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Abins.
Just a question to the law director. Is, you know, I agree, it should be emergency, but I'm just wondering, on this particular type of legislation, is emergency appropriate and can it be used?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a change to the business code as opposed to the zoning code.
Okay.
So the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to T-84 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by Swink and seconded by AWIG to adopt T-84 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any final comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
I would just like to add for the public, this is a third reading, so it would have been approved tonight. It's just with the emergency, it now comes into effect now rather than 30 days. We need this. We don't want shady massage parlors coming into our city. So I just wanted to let you know that.
That's the goal. Thank you, Mrs. Swink. Are there any additional comments at this time? All right, hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink.
Yes.
Abins.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
AWIG.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously and becomes ordinance number 6103-2023.
As for meeting announcements, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. here in city council chambers. Do any council members or members of the administration have any final comments this Right, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.[1790.51]